We'll let her come down. We're calling the roll, listen to you. I know. Festerson.
Here.
Gurnat.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Jerem.
Here.
Stothard.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. Now please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for our invocation by Councilmember Gurnat.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we pray with joy and thankfulness for your mercy to us as we begin our earthly work. Amen.
Amen.
City Clerk, Sir Cypher, publication on the Daily Record on August 17th. Notice for a pre-council and regular city council meeting, August 21st, 2012. A current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in a white binder on these four legislative chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it is not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic device. Mr. Clerk.
Orders on final rating and planning board attachments. Item number five, ordinance to approve a major amendment to a mixed-use development agreement for Ridgeview to allow an existing broadcast tower to be increased in height from 105 feet to 111 feet, located at 18505 Wright Street. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number five begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Gray. Jerem. Stothard. Thompson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Passed seven to zero.
Item number six, ordinance to approve the transportation element of the master plan for the city of Omaha. A planning board and planning department recommend approval and we have two communications support.
Before we start the public hearing, just if I could have a show of hands of how many people are here to speak on this issue? All right, thank you. Public hearing on agenda item number six begins now. Are there any proponents?
Ladies and gentlemen of council, I'm Derek Miller, planning staff, transportation planner for the planning department. Just real quickly, a brief overview of this project. Back in November 2010, we kicked off the process to update the transportation element, which was the first update since 95 when the overall master plan, the modern master plan was adopted. We went through the process since then, held various public meetings, went out to various groups to speak about the project. There were four major goals that led the effort after hearing from the public. The first being provide balanced options for enhanced mobility. The second, attain a safe and healthy environment. Third, create a livable and connected neighborhood and promote economic returns with fiscal sustainability. But what it really boils down to what this plan is about is choice. Choice in mobility in Omaha. Basically make it easier to get around Omaha. We're not focusing on one mode or another. It's a balanced plan, a multimodal plan, which has been called out from other elements of the master plan. Most recently, the environment element called for this update of the master plan. So with the consultants' work and the public works, planning parks and other various agencies' involvement, we went through this process and developed this comprehensive transportation plan, basically for the next 20, 25 years. And there are various strategies and some of them include things like fixing what we have, maintaining what we have, because all of you are well aware of the whole issue with our transportation system. And we're continually putting money into resurface those streets. We're doing a relatively good job at that. But at the same time, we need to continue that effort and enhance and provide other options in mobility in Omaha, including transit, pedestrian and bicycling infrastructure that we heard a great deal from the public, that the public talked about, and there's a public desire for that. Over the last couple of years, I've seen more involvement in these types of planning processes than I've ever seen as I've worked as a community planner in the field. So it just goes to show you that there is an advocacy out there that desires a multimodal environment. I guess I could continue on for the next couple of hours with that, but I'll stop there. So I'm here for any questions you may have.
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions if you could remain standing. So this has been approximately a two-year project.
Right.
Is that correct?
And how many public meetings has the city of Omaha held? We've had about five overall big public meetings and then we've had requests from over 60, 65 groups to come out to speak to those groups. Various staff members, including myself, have spoken to Optimist Clubs, Kiwanis Clubs, Rotary Clubs and other types of groups and basically went over the whole process. And at the same time, we've taken input online, a new website was launched, movingomaha.org to represent transportation in Omaha. And we've received numerous comments through that source as well as Engage Omaha. We've seen a lot of public dialogue through that website as well.
So approximately how many of our fellow citizens participated?
Approximately over 3,000 people attended those various meetings, either the smaller meetings or some of the larger public meetings. And the largest meeting we had was back on May 1st. We had over, probably over 400 people attend, basically when we unveiled the plan.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Are there any other proponents?
Todd Pitzer with Public Works, 1819 Firenum. I just wanted to express the cooperation between the two departments, Public Works and Planning. We're here to speak in favor of the plan and I'm here for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Mr. President, members of the council, David Levy of the Baird Home Law Firm. I'm speaking today, however, on behalf of Omaha By Design as chairman of the Omaha By Design Advisory Committee, and I urge you to adopt the proposed transportation element of the city's master plan. The urban forum and transportation section of the city's environmental element, which is already part of its master plan, to which the planning board and this council gave unanimous approval, calls for the development of this transportation element. Therefore, this is really an extension of your previous efforts. The proposed transportation element sets forth a long-term vision for our city's future. In city planning and urban development, transportation and land use go hand in hand in determining how a city will look, feel and operate economically and otherwise. Transportation is the other side of the land use coin. A city's vibrancy, its economic sustainability and growth and its desirability are all driven in part by its transportation infrastructure, its transportation options and its ability to move people and goods for business, education, recreation and other purposes. The proposed transportation element does a good job of balancing the many interests and needs of our community, from serving the automobile, which in most areas of the city serves as the primary mode of transportation, to setting forth options and choices for alternative modes of transportation and protecting and enhancing all of our neighborhoods, urban and suburban, with walking, biking and other options in addition to the automobile. People walk, bike and even take the bus in the quote suburbs as well as in the more quote urban parts of town. And there are many indications that many people will desire to do more and more of that in the future. The idea that we can solve our traffic problems simply by building wider streets is a fallacy. Look at Los Angeles. Any idea that we can solve our traffic problems by putting everybody on a bike or on a bus is similarly a fallacy. We must balance needs and create choices, and that's what this plan seeks to do. It has everything from the mundane, fix the streets we have, to the visionary, create a vibrant corridor with public transit as a centerpiece. Some characterize this plan as expensive and exorbitant or as raising taxes, changing TIF or taking property. In fact, this plan has no legal authority or legal ability to raise taxes, change TIF or take property. Instead, it sets a vision for the future. As with all infrastructure and budgetary matters, future city councils and their constituents will have to make choices and set priorities and decide what to implement and when to implement it. As you know better than anybody, the city has limited funding for infrastructure. However, spending those funds without a blueprint such as this plan would be wasteful. This plan creates a coordinated vision to help maximize the benefits of such future spending for the entire community. Thank you very much for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other proponents?
Hi there. My name's Jacqueline Harani. I reside at 4002 Seward Street and I'm a business owner at 2212 South 13th Street. I'd like to ask and recommend that you guys implement this plan. In the recent months, seeing the changes with the bike lanes, I ride my bike a lot from my house to work and I've seen a lot more traffic in the past year with cyclists and having those lanes has been a big safety issue and a big help. And even on the way here, I rode my bike and had a couple of cars try to cut me off and things and having designated bike lanes definitely helps. As a business owner as well, looking at this as not just a cyclist plan but a multi-use balancing of the different modes of transportation is very important for Omaha to grow and develop as a big city. We're still seen as very much of a backwards place in other big cities because we don't really have a lot of public transportation. And I think that's definitely something that's holding us back. And I think, at least in my generation for sure, that's going to be a big issue and concern for how to get around without just the use of cars to travel to other businesses and schools and places within the city. So implementing a plan like this, I think, would be a smart move economically as well as for people's health and safety. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Good afternoon. Mary Bala from the Douglas County Health Department, 1111 South 41st Street. Just want to remind you that six in 10 adults in this community and one in five children in this community are overweight and obese. And plans that are put together that allow different options to increase physical activity and make it a part of our everyday life are important for addressing that issue. I would like to remind you that when we have an opportunity to walk or to ride a bike or even to use public transportation, that little extra bit of walking or exercise every day can make a significant difference in the weight of this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents?
Good afternoon. My name is Doug Kagan and I represent Nebraska Taxpayers for Freedom. This proposed city transportation plan is a stark example of local government intrusion into private business and private property rights. It seeks to micromanage our community and coerce human behavior by advocating principles that government knows best for its citizens. The groups in the planning process that offered recommendations to this study are ones that would benefit from the largesse of expenditures or hold other interests in its completion, but included no input from taxpayers solicited for their opinion who would pay for this explosion of expenditures. Although the most recent census revealed that fewer than 2% of area employees commute by mass transit, that bus riders indicate that few citizens, that bus rider numbers indicate that few citizens prefer buses over other vehicles, this plan seeks to pressure people into riding buses and would expend a huge amount on enhancing bus service together with grandiose new bus stations. Private vehicles always have served as our dominant form of transportation. Thus, the city should concentrate on expanding our street system to accommodate higher vehicle volumes in the future. Pressuring drivers to not drive and mandating bus and carpool lanes on major arterials will only increase congestion and incur additional traffic enforcement costs. The entire focus of this study seeks to create a hostile environment for vehicle traffic in exchange for more traffic privileges for bicycles. A citywide bike system is a funding priority with steel needed dollars for street improvement and additions. On the backs of already overtaxed citizens, proponents advocate in this plan the use of impact fees, sales taxes and tolls to help fund this pretentious project. The rationale behind tax increment financing was to redevelop blighted areas, yet proponents would alter this legislation to allow the city to confiscate private property in order to supposedly improve the value of an area, thereby causing consternation among neighboring homeowners whose property values would plummet from inclusion in or becoming adjacent to TIF areas. The creation of a new local government authority with legal powers to confiscate land and issue development bonds to administer TIF areas resembles the legal furor that resulted in the Keelow versus City of London court decision regarding confiscation of private property that subsequently led to a Nebraska eminent domain law. Dictating to our citizenry where we should live, how densely we should live and with whom we should live smacks of Orwellian government. We urge the council to reject this plan as currently presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
Marty Brown, 148 18 Berry Circle. In 1998, my family hosted a girl from Germany for a year and it was interesting talking to her how the family lived back in East Germany. So I asked her, well, how'd you get to work? How'd you go to your boyfriend or how'd you go to your grandparents? A lot of them rode bikes or they made walks. The reason being, in Germany, most of work, most of factories, most of jobs were located around the villages so they could take a bike or they could take a walk. But, you know, Omaha's built a little bit different. You know, I live out 160th and Q and I love driving my Beamer, but I don't like coming downtown just to spend an hour, one way and an hour back. I suggest maybe a city council could go the 90th and Center or 90th and Dodge for getting us the ability to save some money too. Even now, I notice that 2% of the general public takes the bus and yet we want to add new bus stations and new bike trails. The current metro system operating cost already depends lesser on user fees and more in local and federal government subsidies. This is nonsense to me. With metro bus service budget at $32 million for 2013 and less than 2% of the general public using it, why are we planning more on this venue? I also noticed that the budget grew by 24% in which cash reserve was over $4 million for what? According to the budget. To save money and have the planning department do some good, why not locate the city government to around 90th and Center? And my last comment, and this notion of providing bus service and bike trails to those living in the suburbs is not my ideal of city government. I prefer living in West Omaha because it's safer and I can decide what is best for my community in Millard. The planning sounds like it was taken from the UN Agenda 21 and we all move into the inner city and it is a war on our suburbians. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
My name's James J. Enright, 3303 R Street, Omaha, 68107. I'm not particularly against the whole plan. It's just certain things that raise some red flags there. Personally, I'm not against bike lanes. I know people depend on these lanes to get to work because it's cost a lot of money to have a car. And a lot of young people especially just can't afford a car and so. Bus lanes, I'm kind of undecided about that. I think maybe we do need some bus lanes and try it out at least. The thing that raises a red flag to me is I understand there's a provision that you can, in this plan, that you can divide up the neighborhoods into little entities that will be able to levy taxes for neighborhood improvements. For instance, South Omaha, you could say that's a neighborhood and they're going to raise the taxes on the people that live there. That is something we just don't need in Nebraska. We are 15th in total taxes in the nation, in Nebraska, as a percent of income. 15th in total state and local taxes. And this is higher than any of our surrounding states. South Dakota is 48th, overwhelming 46th, Azeroi 34th, Colorado 39th, so forth. So we are not in a competitive position state and local tax-wise. So I am definitely against this provision that allows, I think, the city council to set up these tax entities that can levy more taxes. I've never seen, if you have a new entity like, for instance, the learning community, I haven't seen any other taxing bodies lower their taxes. You just get higher taxes. You get more taxes piled up, more taxes. So that's the thing I'm against. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
Good afternoon. My name's John McCollister. I'm the executive director of the Platte Institute in Omaha, Nebraska. The Platte Institute is Nebraska's only free market think tank. And we're pleased to comment on the transportation study. As you well know, the master plan provides a description of stated goals for transportation system in Omaha. Provide a balanced options for enhanced mobility. Attain a safe and healthy environment. Create a livable and connected neighborhoods. Promote economic returns with fiscal stability. Well, the first goal of providing balanced options for enhanced mobility is problematic because empirical evidence does not demonstrate a need for increasing public transportation in order to increase Omaha's mobility. Less than 2% of the workforce in Omaha uses public transportation, so trying to expand the transit system would be essentially unlikely. Secondly, second goal of obtaining safe and healthy environment is fundamentally counterintuitive as such a goal does not even relate to public transportation. It instead attempts to influence individual behavior. Doesn't work. The goal of a livable and connected neighborhoods is similarly unrelated to public transportation. Livable neighborhoods are not achieved by expanding public transit. It should only be a focus of individuals living in those neighborhoods and choosing to live in those neighborhoods, not through some municipal government saying that they ought to live in those neighborhoods or moving from west to east. The final goal promoting economic returns and fiscal stability cannot occur with the public transit system. Currently, operating revenues only account for 11% of metro air transit fees. They currently exact about $27 million in terms of taxes from both the state, the city and federal sources. Those operational costs, like I say, only account for 11% of metro air transit finances. When you expand metro air transit, you should recognize that their pension fund is underfunded by 37% of salaried employees and 38% for hourly workers when you observe the unfunded accrual liability. This means that the agency currently has an unfunded liability of over $1 million. Couple other general comments about it. Here we're in a situation for government substituting its enlightened opinion of things for the market. And when you do that, you're certainly going in an area of folly. So we believe that the transportation system is going to be very expensive for taxpayers in Omaha. We'd be far better off by subsidizing taxi service than expanding metro air transit. We're going to address their board on Thursday with some issues that relate to their operation. Questions?
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
My name is Catherine Cook. I'm at 11935 Cass Plaza. The overall plan, I'm not against the overall plan. I do question the bicyclists that are so on a mission to put all of us on bicycles. It's not practical for me to ride my bicycle to work. I only live five miles from work, but I have to be clean and dressed and ready to meet the public and I can't be sweaty and got my hair matted to my head. I don't think it's practical. It's nice that some people can bicycle to work. It's not practical for the majority of people who work in the business world. Also, we live in a climate that is up and down every day. If we had 70 degrees every day, that would make it more likely. But many people are suburbanites like me. I'm more central Omaha now, but it's still not practical for me to ride a bike. I'm very much for getting a hold on obesity in this country and I'm a proponent of exercise. I've been exercising for many, many years, but there are other ways you can get your exercise besides riding your bicycle back and forth to work. So I think you have to look at it from the majority of citizens and what benefits them the most. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
Hi, my name is Rob Rohrbo. I live at 9215 Dorcas Street in Omaha. I am affiliated with Nebraska Taxpayers for Freedom and I have their paper in front of me, but I'm speaking on my own as I'm not sure my views match theirs entirely. As I read through their report, I saw a lot of things that did not seem to be free market based, that seemed to be some kind of a plan that would actually go against the free market and appear to be coercive. And I saw some things that concerned me. One thing in particular, just there's an example that they support that I question and I wonder if anybody's looked into this. There is a proposal for LED traffic lights and it looks like there is a cost savings there and I know the group applauds that. But I wonder if any of you are familiar with stories that in other northern cities where those traffic lights, because they are LEDs and they provide no heating, tend to freeze over and become not visible to motorists and create traffic hazards. I'm concerned about both the nature of where this plan goes and if we've really investigated thoroughly all the ramifications. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Moran. I live at 13909 Charles Street. I've come before you today because I was urging you to go back to the drawing board with respect to this plan with greater impact or input from the citizens of Omaha, with particular emphasis on the public's understanding of the funding mechanisms for this plan. As I looked at this plan, the transportation element, there were several troubling aspects to me that raised, as other speakers have said, red flags. The first one was two of the stated goals. One of them is a balanced option for mobility other than autos. The second one is to attain safe and healthy environment with improved access to grocery stores to sell fresh food. That's what it stated. I think first of all, that if you look at some of the discussion they have in here, in my view, they seem to demonize automobile traffic. And I think until we get to the day of Scotty beamy to the Westroads, the fact of the matter is the way our town is developed, automobile transportation is the mode we're going to have to live with in our lifetime and well into the future until we get some of the Star Trek type matters. The report demonizes, in my view, automobile traffic. The report laments the fact that money has to be spent on maintaining the streets of Omaha. They also state that reliance on automobiles has made people less healthy and doesn't promote a good environment. I agree that in this day and age, that people need to be concerned about their health and their well-being. But to promote a transportation mechanism that is essentially socially engineered, where we're going to go, I think, is where we're going to go, I think, is well beyond what government is intended to do and should do. When I looked at the Section 7 of this article, excuse me, of this plan, it talked about the projects. It seemed to me the centerpiece of the projects related to bicycles and buses. Now, I've had a bicycle since I was eight years old. I ride my bicycle in my neighborhood. I think it's laudable that you should ride a bicycle, but the fact of the matter is that this report makes what I view as an unsubstantiated statement that there is saying there is, quote, "high demand," there's high bicycle travel demand for east-west movement. So, they take that premise and go from there, and the report does nothing more than talk in very great detail about various projects to enhance bicycle travel. What it doesn't state, though, when you really look at it, I think if you ask citizens of Omaha, "Would you like to have more bike paths and walking paths?" I'm sure they would say yes, but if you ask them, "Do you want that to work?" And, you know, they're proposing, this plan proposes, taking utility easements across your backyards and turning it into walkways and whatever, and use the financing of things that are intended for blighted areas that now would be used here. They're talking about SIDs, which I had an SID before we were annexed in Omaha. These are additional tax mechanisms that do nothing more than increase our property taxes and increase the tax base. So, again, there's aspects to this that I think that are laudable, but I think that there needs to be greater input and understanding by citizens of Omaha that how you want to accomplish this, I think, if you really looked at it, would be too costly for what citizens would achieve by doing this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there, could I have a show of hands? How many other opponents do we have remaining? We have two minutes. Yeah, we have two more, so we'll have two more speakers then. And ma'am, if you would like to, you can come down, move to the, advance to the front.
John Yerke. I live at 84, or, this moves, sorry. I'm a mechanical engineer, but I recognize social engineering when I see it. I have taken the bus to work and back. I enjoy it when I have a good book. I've ridden my bike before. If you really want more bikers, there's big hills that probably should be flattened first because from 84th to 16th, there's some massive hills. The traffic doesn't bother me as much as those. But I'd rather see the master plan for the roads, you know, serve the people instead of dictating to the people what they should do. And I'm really against all the incentivizing and decentivizing of the activity that you want to see the people do as far as, you know, the health reason I see in the New York plan, which kind of mirrors this one where they said they'll have people walk more because there'll be less parking, which will force them to take the buses. And, you know, making it more inconvenient to drive isn't the best way to get people healthy. So, I'd rather see a plan focused on, you know, the traffic as it is as opposed to you trying to get the people to do what you want them to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name's Darlene Uly, and I live at 2218 North 56th Street, and I'm not a professional sleeper speaker. I'm just a mom with eight children, and seven of them live in Omaha, and all I see here is taxes and taxes. How are my children, how are you supposed to encourage business to come to this city so my children can have jobs as they grow up? And that's my concern, and I also see the Orwellian side of this. This isn't organic as, this isn't just happening naturally. You're going to force us into a plan that tells us where we can drive our bikes, take paths behind our homes, make them unsafe for our children playing in the backyard. We're going to have strangers running around our backyard, possibly trash, depending upon whether people care about the environment that are really using the path. I agree with what a lot of these people's talking about. My children are all thin. I keep them healthy. They drive in cars to school. They don't ride their bike, and they manage to stay healthy and thin, so that's all I really have for input. Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed. We have a moment here for rebuttal? If anybody from the proponent's side would wish to say anything?
Chad Weaver, City Planning. A couple of things, there's a lot we could address, but I don't want to necessarily belabor the points. I think Derek did a good job of trying to illustrate what we were, what our goals were. I guess I want to be clear on a couple of things. We're not trying to coerce anyone. We're trying to provide options for those who might choose to use them. There is, are, and probably always will be, a lot of money spent on streets for people that want to drive cars. I know I drive one. I live in the suburbs and probably will continue to drive one. The presumption of some of the speakers seem to be that there is a free market providing these streets, and buses and bikes can't be provided for by the free market, so it somehow isn't going to work. I guess if we can find a way for our free market to build our streets, then it would be a different discussion, but right now, autos are subsidized, and essentially, that's all that's been subsidized. So, changing what we spend the funds on to some small extent seems reasonable to us to provide those options, so. The notions that Omaha is too spread out or too cold, all those have been touched upon in the plan. I mean, we realize we can't move south. We can't flatten hills. We can't scrunch our city into a smaller area. So, again, we're not trying to provide bike paths to everywhere or takeaway car routes that are currently existing. We're just trying to provide options. Somebody did touch on the fact that cars are expensive to own. I personally have just tried to add a car to the family for a teenage daughter, and trying to find money to buy it, insure it, maintain it, put gas in it is crippling to some folks. And to say that we're going to spend all of our money on cars because 98% of the people drive cuts everyone else completely out of the equation. And I want to add again, we're trying to find that sweet spot where we are serving the folks that want to be served with other options. We're not trying to tilt the dial beyond that to force anyone to make a decision they're not ready to make. So, if you have any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Ms. Stothard.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few comments, and then Derek, I think I'm going to direct some of the comments to you, so. But first of all, I'm a member of the MAPPA board, have been for three years, and I did vote to approve the MAPPA plan. They also have a 25-year long-range transportation plan, and I recognize how important it is to have a comprehensive look at what the future will bring and what our needs are and what our vision will be, and to use it as a blueprint. In fact, with MAPPA, we're required to have a long-range transportation plan to be eligible for federal transportation money. I also agree with all of the goals that both MAPPA and the city has for maximize mobility, increased safety, security, et cetera. But I do have a few concerns that I wanted to ask, particularly because some of Omaha's plans is different than the MAPPA plan. I know as far as the conversation we had with MAPPA, that the plan, any plan, long-range transportation plan, has to be balanced, and we have to balance new with maintaining and repairing what our old is. And also with MAPPA, we recognize that in Omaha, 98% of the people commute by car, and we recognize that when all the changes were done and increased modes of transportation were added to the MAPPA plan, that still approximately 95% of people in Omaha would still travel and commute by car. So, it is important that we continue to maintain and serve our roads. Some of the things, though, in the city's plan, I guess, Derek, I'll ask you, so if you could come back up. Some of those meetings that you held in the public, I did attend several of them, and there was one at Mammoth Hall that I attended. And that was probably one of your biggest ones. And there were a lot of developers in the back, and after the meeting, I talked with a lot of them, and a lot of them were expressing a lot of concern about some of the things that were said that night, and some of them, I wrote down, I just took the notes from that night, so I wanted to address those again. Recognizing in both plans, MAPPA and City of Omaha, is that they estimate significant growth will still occur west of I-8680 in the future, and estimate around approximately 130,000 people will be added to Omaha. To make the goals of this plan work, MAPPA had approximately 10,000 people moving from west back into midtown or east. City of Omaha has 30, and I think MAPPA looked at that as being excessive and pretty aggressive. Can you speak to that about moving this 30,000 people from west to east? The other thing, while you're talking about it, you may want to go into it, is the policy changes were the other thing that you discussed in the presentation that I went to, that the developers and the builders were very much concerned with, and that goes along with what I said about moving people west to east. And two that I wrote down that night, or three, actually, that caused the most concern was, I think you called them incentives that night, and I remembered some of the builders were saying, "I think these are more like punishments," because one of the things you said was pullback, not you, but whoever was presenting, pullback or delay sewer extensions out west, have advantageous regulatory environment, so more regulations on building out west. And then you also talked about a tiered impact fee structure, and the example was, is if you want to develop according to the master plan, you may have a one-page application. If it was not according to the master plan or not infill, maybe a 300-page application. And that was discussed that evening. So, those things concerned the developers, they concerned me, too, and that all has to do with moving people from west to east, and of course, I represent west Omaha, so it's a concern to me. So, could you talk about those things?
Yeah, over the course of the last year and a half, two years for this plan, developing this plan, it's about transportation, but as Mr. David Levy talked about, land use has to be tied to transportation, vice versa. So, this is much about, discussions were about land use as they were transportation. As far as the 130,000 people we'll add to the Omaha metro or Omaha area within Douglas County, MAPPA did show 10,000 with inside 680, whereas our plan recommended is, and these are all recommendations, it's just policy, and there's more work to continue on after this process, and I'll get into that a little bit, but what they had recommended is 20,000 would be inside 680, encouraging them to move into those areas. And we're not actually moving people. As we add population, they have choices in housing and where to go, and basically looking at incentivizing areas with inside 680 to bring those new population or people that may move to inside 680, not forcing people moving from west Omaha to east Omaha or midtown. Of that 30,000 where we shifted, we showed 10,000 closer to 680. And what we're talking about there are the ideas of Miracle Hills. Someday, that's going to develop. It's a golf course today. It's going to be much like Ironwood is developing today at Sterling the Ridge on 132nd and Pacific. So, that's, to us, that's infill development. So, that would take into account that 10,000 that's closer into 680. But again, we're still showing 100,000 increase in population outside 680, continuing as we do in west Omaha, southwest and northwest. As far as the incentives, we were very limited on incentivizing infill development and really just a tax increment financing. That's our only incentive right now, but the plan talks about, like these gentlemen talked about, different ideas on gaining more funding for transportation. Those are just a menu of options to pay for a future road system, and again, and other transportation options, but the majority of the funding for transportation will be spent on roads, 90% of the funding. Our goal in the environment element is 90% will still travel by car and 10% by other modes. That's our goal in the next 20, 25 years. And I can understand why the developers were upset that night. Anytime we talked about sewer, and I think even the slide said pulling back sewer, and I wish that wouldn't have ended up on that slide, but we're not talking about that. Those will be for future discussions. One of the things the plan recommends is a land use element update in the next coming year, and we'll take a look at that then. So, again, more public meetings, more public input. We'll invite the development community to participate in that process, but those are just ideas of how we can further incentivize infill development. And the big thing, why we talk about infill development, we can utilize our resources better. The resources that we have in place, the infrastructure we have in place, we could utilize that to a greater degree than continuing to extend our services out west. But again, providing those housing options for infill development. We're not going to force anybody into a high-rise condo, sleeping in drawers or anything like that. We're talking about providing those options that don't currently exist today. So, that's what we're talking about. It is somewhat aggressive, but if we want to utilize our services better that we have today, utilize our infrastructure that's in the ground today and on the ground today, then we need to look at infill development, and it's actually happening. We've seen a great deal of just redevelopment in this area, and we're going to see a great deal of further redevelopment in this area with all the apartments that are coming online, and that's a growing trend nationally as more people are moving back to the urban areas. It's a big thing for the younger demographics, let alone just housing that they're looking at and where they want to reside, but also how they get around the community as a demographic shift we're seeing nationally. We're also seeing it in Omaha, too, and that was really played out in all the public meetings we had. Like I said, over the last two, three years, in either the last five years, we see a lot more people advocating for transit, for bicycling, and for walking, more than there ever has been, but we're not taking a hard right. We're not taking a huge shift, pushing everybody onto bikes, pushing everybody to walk and take transit. We're just providing that choice. But as far as the land use discussions, that's ongoing. The plan recommend, like I said, to update that land use element to further look at how we're going to lay out our city as far as land use. So, that's an upcoming component that has to be completed.
Okay. Yeah, I think the, just some of the talk from the development community is their fear is that this plan, opposed to MAPPA's plan, might make it more and more difficult for developers to develop, and I think that that's a fear out there. The other thing they really talked about that night was the funding, and although, you know, you did discuss funding options, and they were on your slide, but it came out as new fees, new tolls, new taxes, and I think that that was a parking tax, sales tax, impact fees, parking surcharge that I don't believe anyone has done that before. And so, you know, those types of things, I think, really raise some red flags, too, whereas the MAPPA plan had a lot of federal funding in there. So, can you talk a little bit about the funding mechanism for this? I mean, this is an expensive list of projects. There's no doubt about it, and once they get into that plan, I think there's a, there has to be the concern how it's going to be paid for.
Yeah, and I think without doing anything, without having a multimodal transportation system in the future, our system could actually cost more if we don't do anything. If the status quo stays the same, I think the funding equation is just going to get worse. We're already seeing that today. Funding just for what we're doing today is dropping every year. National funding, gas tax funding is dropping. So, I think what we asked the consultant to do, and what they did, was lay out a menu of new options, and you see this all over the country. All these things are being discussed. Some are ballot initiatives to provide better transportation systems, but at this point, we're not settling on just one. We just wanted a menu so we can have an idea of what we can do in the future, because as you know, we're, I don't know what the particular dollars are, but we're losing transportation funding locally to maintain what we have. So, we're going to have to fill that void somehow, so there's no right answer here. There's no silver bullet to solve this problem, but those things are on the table that we'll discuss and will definitely involve the development community. After that meeting, Chad and Rick met with the development community numerous times. We held a big community meeting with the development community to talk about all these issues. So, what this plan does is just lays out a menu. It's not saying we're going to pass a new impact fee for transportation, which we already have today. There is an impact fee for transportation out there in west Omaha. As new development happens, they pay some money to extend our road system. At this point, we're not going to say we're just going to go and pass a new tax or pass a new impact fee right away with this plan. This plan just lays out a menu of those options.
Okay. Speak a little, too, about, MAPPA's plan does not mention the, encourage physical activity as Omaha's does. And of course, I think we all appreciate a healthy lifestyle, but it wasn't put in the MAPPA's long-range transportation plan, talking exactly about encouraging physical activity. What was, why was that decision made to put it in Omaha's? Because I know you looked at MAPPA's plan when you did this.
Yeah, and we were certainly involved through that entire process, and that plan has actually come a long way, too, as far as advocating for a multimodal environment. Physical activity is very important. Everyone's coming to realize how we design and build our communities affects our community health, and how we design our transportation system does so as well. In communities where they have robust transit systems, where they have extensive bike systems and pedestrian environments, those communities are much healthier than other communities that just rely on one mode of transportation. Additionally, the majority of this funding came through the CDC, the Centers for Disease Control, matched with city money to fund this project, but it is just, it's just one of the components. It's not all about health. It's not all about bikes, like we've said. So, it's important to us that community health has a voice and has a seat at the table because, like I said, the way we design and build our communities affects our public health.
Was there any discussion, at least of the concept of reserving right-of-way for an outer belt?
That, it's somewhat discussed, that I think that's more of a project at the MAPPA at the regional level. I don't even think that there was two, there was an inner beltway and an outer beltway that were determined in that beltway plan, and I think both of those corridors were outside of our jurisdiction, so it's something that will have a tremendous effect on our community. So it's something that will have a tremendous effect on our community, but at the same time, it's outside our jurisdiction. So our plan really didn't cover that because it's outside our purview of land use and transportation planning.
All right, thanks.
Mr. Jerem.
Yes, I want to thank Jerick and your cohorts and participants in the process. I was at the meetings as well, from the small ones upstairs to the bigger ones out in the UNO campus and in a few places in between. I've heard from a lot of constituents on this, and I think I have a stack of correspondents that's this thick in support of it. So we have a divergence in the parts of the city that we represent in terms of the western and the central downtown, midtown core. I just want to make a comment about those who expressed concern from terms of the cost of, you can sit down, Jerick, if you want, the cost of government and taxes and things, to consider the cost of increasing transportation infrastructure and other utility infrastructure to an ever-expanding concentric circle to the exterior portions of the city. Because the cost of doing that, when you have low-density population out there, is something that if you're truly concerned about a tax burden in the city, you should be really concerned about the city proceeding in that kind of direction. Because the fewer people that live per square mile in the western part of the city that demand four- and five-lane roads and sewer systems and utility lines and schools and all that other stuff, when you just don't have the density that you have as you proceed to the inner core, it costs far more for government to provide all of the ancillary services that go along with that infrastructure, too. So by not having a plan, a guide, something like this that promotes multimodal transportation and the other things discussed, you're actually at risk and peril for having an overwhelming tax burden to support the, just let's keep going west and going west and going west. Because to do that is very expensive, because the density isn't there. It's not there now. And it's a very, you look at the southwest precinct and what it costs, look at the northwest police precinct and the cost of providing police protection, how thin they're spread, and the concerns that people have at the cost of 100-plus million-dollar budget, because we're spread so thin. And then the advocates that we maybe need a fifth police precinct and the cost that go along with that, because we keep going west. So that whole debate can't be missed here. And I would just urge those who are concerned, truly concerned about holding down the cost of government, to consider those sorts of things as we go through this whole process. There have been, I mean, there's been talk about the development community, and I want to make sure that the impression isn't left that there's unanimity in the development community, in the, in the community that supports the development community, and the architects and engineers and things is being somehow opposed to this. There are segments, as there are in many of the issues that we debate, that there are portions of the community that has reached out in support of this. And so I don't want people to think, well, there were, all of the developers in town were against this. Yes, there are some, and there are some that are in the home building and communities that are building out in the western hinterlands and northwestern parts of, southwestern parts of the city that were at the meeting and representatives from there that were accurately depicted. I saw some, too, that had the reactions of concern. But there were some that are, that were not. So I don't think we can cast the impression that they are a generality like that, that they were all against this. Because in my opinion, from what I've saw, from what I've heard, that's just not the Someone from, I think, the South Omaha 33rd and R level testified about concern about new types of districts. I don't know so much that you can expect the vision that you expressed, but I would remind you that there are already the mechanisms within the city governmental structure to have business improvement districts. There are street improvement districts. And those sorts of things can pop up when, through public participation and input, they decide there's certain improvements that they want to do and devise a funding mechanism to support what it is that they want to do. So that's not as revolutionary as you might expect, and it's being utilized in several segments of the city. So when you get to the basic tenets of providing this multimodal plan, I think that while not perfect, and while it has some things that are concerning to some, overall, this guidepost is something worthy of support and something that I would make a motion to approve.
Second. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'd also just say that I have received a lot of contact in my district as well, supportive of this general approach. And I'm supportive of the general approach, too, which just means that you're supportive of a comprehensive multimodal transportation plan. And I think the significant finding of the plan is that the current approach we're taking is unsustainable over the next many years. And I think we do need to take note of that as policymakers and as taxpayers. And I think that point was made by Jerick just a little while ago. I would also like, I was pleased to see that several projects were identified as the most popular projects amongst the public in this process. And those are projects that council members are already working on, things like the Dundee Business Improvement District, things like the 19th and 20th Street Conversion, Park Avenue Development. Products like that really scored high on some of these community discussions, and it's why I was pleased to see that. And I'm glad the council members are already working on those priorities. And it does, the plan does contemplate several different tools and implementation mechanisms to do some of the things it talks about, but that's not what's being considered here today. And I think some of those things probably would cause some concern to developers and probably some concern to me as well. But I haven't heard from any developer here today, and there is no developer here today in opposition to this plan, because I think they know this is a master plan element. This is not any particular measure or policy being implemented today. Those have to be considered on their own merits and at a different time when that conversation is specific and would be approved or not approved on their own merits. In fact, the only developer here today is a preeminent engineering developer who is the chair of the committee, who is advocating passage of this master plan, so that holds weight with me, too. So having said all that, I'll support that motion. And I also just would like to acknowledge the extensive public input that was done over the last year or two by planning and by the committee in charge of this. Received much input, both electronically and in public meetings and over the internet and many different facets. So there aren't too many things we've considered that have had more public input than this document at this point, in my opinion.
Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't want it to go unsaid here that many of you know that I have been somewhat of a critic of mass transit, because it has not met the needs of people in the northeastern and southeastern part of the city the way that I think it needs to and that the community thinks it needs to. The opponents talk about the fact that there are, there's only 2% ridership. And part of that 2% ridership and part of the reason for that is that we have a number of individuals who seek employment, who only place of getting employment is in the southwestern or northwestern parts of the city. And we don't have transportation that runs out there at certain points in time where people can avail themselves of that transportation and making sure they can get there and back from work. And in addition to that, there are other issues related to, for example, we just recently went through a deal here where the concern for closing the polling places and what it takes to get individuals out to the election commissioner's office and the amount of time that that takes on a bus, upwards of two hours or so, makes it prohibitive for people to do that. I think if you had more, if we had a better mass transit system in place, you would see more people use it. I don't want it to go unsaid that there, that people, there are people in my district and in the southeastern part of the district, but I'll let Councilmember Gurnett speak for himself if he wants to. But fact of the matter is, is that more people would use mass transportation if it was better designed and ran at later hours so that people can use it to get to work and to get to other places and get to the election commissioner's office and other places like that. So I don't want it to go unsaid that everyone is, you know, for the most part, okay with this. I think it's a blueprint for where we need to go. But I also wanted to keep in mind that the mass transit system itself needs to do a better job than it has been doing up to now. But I am supportive of this, of this master plan and where it's headed and do intend to vote for it. But I didn't want some of those other things to go unsaid. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. There's been considerable discussion here today about new fees and tolls, possible sales tax, raising a sales tax, property tax, new property taxes that would be levied. And I, from my perspective, I just wanted to be said that by passing this ordinance today, I'm certainly not condoning the fact that we're saying today that these new types of fees or taxes will be, will be passed or necessary. But I think what we are saying is this, is that, you know, we need to look to the future of what our community is going to look like here in the next 15 to 20 years. And we need to be realistic that these types of facilities, these types of improvements that could be possible for the city of Omaha won't come at, they won't be free. A number of us from the city of Omaha just went to Minneapolis here three months ago to look at their system that they have for bicycle paths and bike lanes. And it's, it's great. And a lot of people use those facilities on a regular basis. Minneapolis and St. Paul, it's 500 miles north of Omaha. So, you know, the sentiment that you won't use these types of facilities in the wintertime is not true. So just to wrap it up here, I think the, what I'm trying to say, and by, if I do vote for this today, what I'm saying is, is that we owe it to ourselves, we owe it to the community, to explore the possibilities of what Omaha could look like. And if future councils, 10, 15 years from today, accept the fact that paying for bike lanes or paying for these other public transportation type of improvements is appropriate and necessary, then those types of actions will be taken by somebody else. But I think it's just taking a realistic look, that if these things are going to be expected or wanted, that they do come with a price. But we are certainly not saying here today that we're going to raise taxes or we're going to implement these fees or tolls by passing this ordinance.
This is a plan.
This is a plan. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will probably be one of the ones that will not vote for it. And it's not because I don't believe in it, and it's not because I don't think the city has done its due diligence. But I think Omaha is just a little bit different than a Colorado Springs or Minneapolis. For one thing, those cities are more flat. And the paradigm that we're working under seems to be a paradigm of a flat city as opposed to the, to the multiple hills we have. And then another problem is that the plan seems to fit east Omaha a little bit better than west Omaha. So I'm having some hesitancy about a one-size-fits-all kind of approach, although I do want to say that the city is addressing a very needed thing that we have to study and look at. I believe that the MAPPA plan is actually a better fit for Omaha than the city's plan. And so for that reason, and for the reason that I am concerned about the cost, I'll be voting no. Now, having said that, that's not rebuking the city or its officials. It's just, right now, I feel it's not the right plan. I think a plan is needed, and I think the MAPPA plan is a better fit for Omaha than the city's plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Stathard.
Thanks. Just quickly, and I feel like I need to clarify, too, and to Franklin's point. Again, MAPPA plan, 25-year plan, I'm on the MAPPA board, I voted for it, I approved it. I do believe we need the vision and the blueprint. There are some elements to Omaha's plan, though, that I hesitate about. And I think that if there was some adjustment, I would be willing to vote for it. But there are some that I feel that if, that they need adjusting, that I have some concerns with, that my constituents have expressed some concerns with. So it's not the plan itself that I object to, we need a plan. And just like MAPPA's plan, that was needed also. But just because of some of the, some of the elements of this would be a reason that I would say no to this plan. But the concept, the goals, I do agree with.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stathard.
Yes.
Thompson.
No.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's passed, it's passed on a five to two vote. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7H, due to no meeting being held September 4th, Agenda Item Number 7 should be laid over three weeks to September 11th for publication and public hearing. Liquor, Inferno nightclub, 14334 U Street, Class I liquor license, new application, new location. You have communications from the Chief Billing Inspector that if you wish to pass this, you need to pass a contingent on they're getting proper permits, and you have a communications opposing.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 8 begins now. Are there any proponents? That's a...
Hi.
Yes.
My name is Nicole Omos, 14742 U Plaza, and I am the manager of Huaigoo Entertainment. We're looking to open a nightclub at that address. So I was hoping I could get a liquor license approved today. I know we're not compliant yet, but we're working on that.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Most approved subject for getting the permits and inspection code violations taken here.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stathard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Item Number 9, Red Dragon, 2322 South 20th Street, Class I liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 9 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, Mr. President and members of council. I'm Sarah Mooney, 12165 West Center Road, Suite Number 54. I am the attorney for Kay Bay, who is present here today. Ms. Bay is the president of Kay Bay Incorporated, which has submitted an application for a liquor license for Red Dragon Restaurant. This application is strictly for beer and wine for consumption on the premises, and we would ask that you grant our application. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Gurnett. Your pepper steak is delicious.
Motion to approve. Second.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stathard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Item Number 10, McFoster's Natural Kind Cafe, 302 South 38th Street, Class I liquor license, new application, old location.
Public hearing on Agenda Item Number 10 begins now. Are there any proponents?
I think that's me. Kelly Johnson, owner of McFoster's Natural Kind Cafe at 302 South 38th Street, and we need a liquor license to keep operating as the business has operated the last 18 years.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Hi, George Prescott. I'll be the food and beverage manager at McFoster's, and I just want to say I'm going to do my best to keep everything the way you guys like it.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Second.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stathard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Item Number 11, Flix, 1019 South 10th Street, request permission for special Disney license for Beer Garden on September 15th. It's adopted seven to zero. Item number 11, Flix, 1019 South 10th Street, request permission for special Disney license for Beer Garden on September 15th from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. with music ending at 1:00 a.m.
Public hearing on agenda item number 11 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, Jeremiah Morello, 605 South 126th Street, co-owner of Flix Lounge at 1015 South 10th Street, here to answer any questions the council might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Kyle Bond, 605 South 126th, co-owner of Flix Lounge.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Second.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted, or it's approved seven to zero. Item number 12, Attitude on Food, 2405 N Street, request permission to appoint Melissa Tibbin, manager.
Public hearing on agenda item number 12 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Nathan Newhouse, owner of Attitude on Food, 2405 N Street, Omaha. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents?
Motion to approve.
Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Approved seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Item, this removed consent agenda shall be taken up by city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by city council rules of order.
The public hearing on agenda item number 13 was held on August the 14th, 2012.
Motion to approve.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted, or it's approved seven to zero. Item number 14 through 30 are today. 24. 24. 24 removed, okay.
The public hearing on agenda items numbers 14 through 23 and 25 through 30 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent. Public hearing is closed.
Roll call. Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
They're all adopted seven to zero. Item number 24, resolution that pursuant to the Omaha Municipal Code Section 31148, a special billing rate for sewer services, service provided to Airlight Plastics located at 6110 Abbott Drive shall be established in accordance with the terms and conditions stated here.
Public hearing on agenda item number 24 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a point. I have asked that this be taken off, that because as we, the city attempts to navigate its way through the current contentious battle between the industrial users and other commercial users, that I have some concerns about whether this would be appropriate to take up at this time. Maybe laying it over would be a better idea. But if it's, will the council go forward today, I just thought on this one, I would vote no at this time out of those concerns.
I would be willing to second a layover.
Mr. Stube, could you, could you speak about this, a special, or the, a special rate? I mean, what does this entail?
Bob Stube, Public Works. Essentially, what this is, is that the code allows for situations where water that is going through the water meter potentially is not being, going down the sewer. So, an example would be, let's say, soda bottling, where a lot of the product is going through the meter, but is being used within the product, and therefore, it's not going into the sanitary sewer. And this particular case with Airlight Plastics, it's a cooling tower. So, a lot of that water that is going through the water meter is being evaporated into the atmosphere, and therefore, it's not going into the sewer. So, in this particular situation, we provide an opportunity to essentially have a sub-meter to account for water that's, that's not going into the sewer, and therefore, give them essentially a reduced rate because of that.
Do we have a number of customers like this?
Yeah, there's probably, oh, three dozen, maybe somewhere in that range.
So, this is a standard pressed practice?
Yeah, this is a standard practice. And again, it's allowed by code to do this.
We have a motion and a second, is that correct, for a layover?
A layover of what, one week? What was the layover motion? There wasn't one, but...
Three weeks.
Three weeks?
Mr. Festerson.
Just one more question to Mr. Stube. So, pending the outcome of the CSO discussions, would there be any reason in your mind to lay this over? I mean, would this be a scenario, this type of exemption that would possibly change under, under the discussions that are taking place right now?
No, it potentially would not change. If, again, with regard to the, the large users out there, there's a, that particular usage is going into the sewer. But in this particular case, there's really no change. It has an impact on the company because they will continue to pay those rates until this particular ordinance is addressed by the, or this particular resolution is addressed by council.
But this type of situation is not part of that discussion?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
So, we have a motion and a second for a layover. Is that a one, or three week layover?
Roll.
Mr. Gray.
Do we think at some point, time they're going to be done with those discussions within the next three weeks? Or is that, is that the goal of saying three weeks?
That's the goal.
Okay.
I can't say, that's beyond my control, but that's the goal.
Okay.
Some of those discussions are this week.
Okay, so, then it's three weeks going to be enough?
Well, we'll see.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Roll call. Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
No.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
No.
It's adopted on a five to two vote. Or it's a laid over on a five to two vote.
Right.
Item number 31, resolution that law department is authorized to make an offer to allow judgment to be taken against the city of Omaha in litigation pending in the district court, Kristen Larson versus the city.
Public hearing on agenda item number 31 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Roll call. Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7A, agenda items number 32 through 33 shall be laid over three weeks for publication in public hearing. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7D, the public hearing on agenda items 34 through 44 shall be held on the third reading. Ordinance on second item number 45, ordinance authorizing purchase order, to issue a purchase order, Northwest Electric for a 12-month open order price agreement for electrical maintenance on motors and controls.
Public hearing on agenda item number 45 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item number 47, ordinance declaring necessity appropriating property located at 2024 and 2028 Maple Street as part of the implementation of the consolidated plan.
Public hearing on agenda item number 47 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item number 48, ordinance approving an agreement for the sale of city-owned property at 1130 South 30th Avenue.
Public hearing on agenda item number 48 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item number 49, ordinance approving acceptance of a grant to provide funding for violence prevention and intervention programs in Omaha.
Public hearing on agenda item number 49 begins now. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Stothard.
Thanks. I had just a question about this morning, and I think, Pam, you said that...
Gail is right there, and she's ready to answer your questions.
Okay.
Gail Braun, Grand Administrator.
Hey, Gail. I just wanted to know, as I was reading through this, this funds a gang coordinator position?
That is one of the positions it funds.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And is there already someone that is in that position?
There's a gang specialist through OPD that's getting funded for this, but also a new position of the Omaha 360 Coordinator.
Okay, and has that person been picked, or is that...
No, it's a new position. It has not been.
Okay. Because I just saw, I saw in here a person's name, and I didn't know if that person has been already picked.
No, not at all. This is a new position, first time funded through the Nebraska Crime Commission. And so, we want to get it, you know, approved through city council. And then, there's funds that will be awarded, we're going to sub-grant to the empowerment network, and then they're going to hire the Omaha 360 Coordinator.
Okay. And just basically, the functions of that coordinator are?
They're going to help work with the Omaha 360 Collaborative, the South Omaha 360 Collaborative, and any of the strategies that we have toward crime prevention. They're going to be an overall coordinator for the whole city, not just north or south, but for the whole city. And we have one year funding for this position, but it's not been hired or even been job position posted. And we won't, the city, it's not a city position.
Okay. And then they will work with OPD?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Definitely.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Carter.
Mr. President, I had just a quick question.
Mr. Thompson.
Gail, if you don't mind. You said the funding is for one year?
Yes, it's for one year.
After the year is over, will it become a position that we'll try to put into the police department?
It's not, it's not going to be for the police department. It'll be funding that the empowerment network will have to try to sustain.
Okay, and right now, those, the future funding is still up near?
Yeah, we'll be looking for future funding. Not we, the city, but as a partner, we'll look with them. But this is a, an empowerment network position. It's not a city position.
Thank you.
Item number 50, city of Omaha financial, final 2011 year-end financial summary. Motion to receive, place on file.
Roll call.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Placed on file, seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7C, the public hearing agenda items number 51 to 57 shall be held on the second reading. Motion to adjourn.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It is...